We are going to go ahead and get started. Councilor Long is waiting for a babysitter, so she'll be arriving in a little bit. But we can, since this is for discussion only, it's a public hearing, we can go ahead and get started. So, I want to thank every one of you for coming out. I know this is an exciting point. We hope that we are pretty close to wrapping up this comprehensive plan and can move on to adoption soon. And with that, if we can have an introduction or you tell us who you are and what you're doing here?
Yeah, absolutely. My name is Mark Seibold. I am an architect and city planner with Crafton Toll.
Speak up.
There's not a microphone. I'm an architect and city planner with Crafton Toll, engineering firm in Tulsa. We also have seven other offices around Brooklyn, Arkansas, and Oklahoma City as well. We started this process in late fall of 2017, when we first came and interviewed. And we have been engaged in the development of this plan for quite some time. We're going to do two things. We're going to go through the presentation that we've prepared based on kind of the last meeting we had, it was at City Council, it was a little bit abbreviated. And then we're going to do a deep dive into the plan itself. And I see one copy here in the audience, I have another copy here. Has anybody, look at the copy out there, has anybody else picked up a copy of this yet? Okay. We're going to do the best we can to represent the complexity and the detail and all the work that the community has put into this, not just us, but all of the work and all of the pieces that make this plan work. Ultimately, it's a document that speaks to city government, but it also speaks to the community about priorities and about a certain focus and how we should align those priorities so that the private sector, the businesses, property owners can be in lockstep with the government, with city government activities. So, at any point during this, if you have any questions, please let me know. There will be some specific points along the way when we start talking about individual subjects, that if you have any questions or comments or concerns, just stop me, just say, "Hey, Mark, I got a question," and we'll do that, we'll make it really easy. All right. And so actually, this should be, should be a little updated. These are the steps that we've gone through, and this is actually the process that the document takes. We are in the implementation phase, which is down at the very bottom. So we should add a couple of check marks in there. But ultimately, this is to make sure that we've answered and addressed all your concerns and questions along the way. Did it die, Clint?
What, your mouse?
Yeah. Which button's forward?
The rolly wheel?
Okay.
Now drive.
There we go. There we go. All right. We're also going to be respectful of your time. We know it's homecoming week and you have private lives. I want to focus on some specific things and make sure that you understand kind of the core of what makes Talakwa unique, not just based on our experience of having worked in dozens of other communities around the state and the region, but really what makes you unique because of your economic conditions, because of who you are as people, because of the great relationship between, or the relationship, let's say, the growing relationship between the university, the city, the business sector, and the tribes. Who among you came to the, oh, point it there, okay, that's better, came to some of our early planning meetings? I see a lot of fresh faces. Awesome. Thank you guys very much. That feedback loop of you guys coming at the beginning and then coming then at the end is the reason why this can be successful. All right, yeah. 125 people, 60 workshop attendees, 31, 52 interviews, excuse me, 40 students, 70 workshop attendees. There we go. I don't know if I can get it a little higher up. Okay. The vision statement that was created by the steering committee was Talakwa aspires to be a thriving community that is fiscally accountable, a healthy place for residents of all ages, and a vibrant destination for visitors while maintaining a small-town feel. I'm going to skip through a couple of these real quick and get to the areas of consensus here. Some of the big-picture things we heard was supporting downtown. And we heard a lot of people say that they would talk to folks who would come to the river, come to Tenkiller, even come to NSU and visit family or friends, and they wouldn't stop in downtown. They would take the loop around the city and they would completely bypass downtown. Heard a lot of people talk about the need for connectivity. Sorry, guys, we'll get this figured out. Getting connectivity of sidewalks, there's a lot of people here in town that walk and there's not really great infrastructure that connects both the university and downtown and some of the outside neighborhoods. Economically, job creation rose to the top of the list. We have to provide opportunities for people who have graduated high school here to go to college here or somewhere else and come back and start businesses. We heard about way too many people that were living in Broken Arrow or living in East Tulsa or living in Muskogee and driving over. That's, that's an indicator that there's not the kind of housing choices, there's not the kind of job choices, or there's not the kind of amenities that people want to move here. So all of these things in total mean that we have to frame this plan under these priorities, under these areas of consensus. We'll go through and use some planning-type terms. A couple of them are going to be specific to kind of like the modern-day planning language. We know what downtown is. We know what streets are. Sometimes we'll call a street, we'll call it a corridor. Kind of means the same thing, but a corridor is actually a collection of all the stuff around the street, not just the street. We'll use node, which sometimes means intersection, but also can mean a little bit of commercial at the place, with an intersection of a trail, with intersection of streets, maybe a school or some other institution. So as we go, we'll go through these place types as well. Obviously, we know what neighborhoods are. Districts is a little maybe difficult to define. Obviously, the university, we know where, we know where NSU is, but there's, there's an area around that that is an area of influence that the students recognize. If you're not engaged in the university activities during the day, you may not see what the university impact area looks like. But you, you have your own district, you have your own way you move around the community, and it's unique to you. Where you get a lot of people piling into those districts, you get something like a downtown, where people start to spend money, or you get something like South Muskogee Avenue, where people spend a lot of money. We did present some of this information at the last meeting. This is a series of images that I want you to see, and this is how we frame all of the different elements, how we frame the pieces together in the framework plan. This is basically taking all of the good stuff that exists in the city and how we can improve on it for little money, minor improvements, but also just doing the kind of basic day-to-day work of a city, but doing it in a coordinated way. Instead of having one street intersection here and one street intersection here, working off of a plan. What you see here is the downtown commercial area. That's the darker purple area. Around that, we have the older established neighborhoods and I think Going Snake. We add to that South Muskogee or parts of South Muskogee, I think down to Fourth Street and then Downing, the major node out there. Then we add some of the potential intersections between trails, neighborhoods, and not necessarily dense commercial areas, but places that we can see could be beneficial for these intersections of change. And the next one, I think, is the trails, yeah. So this could be the game changer, or one of the game changers for Talakwa. There are already people who are traveling here to go hiking, to go mountain biking, doing a lot of recreational activities around Talakwa. We want to get people in to Talakwa, out of the cars, with money in their pockets, to come to downtown, to come to Downing, to come to the city. All of these trails have dual purpose. They're going to serve the community first, if you want to get out and walk after dinner or you want to get out on Saturday morning and walk. The idea here is that every neighborhood is within walking distance of a trail or a park. It's a common principle around the country. We forgot about it for 60, 70 years and just built single-use subdivisions, but now cities are backing up for that and realizing that if you have a neighborhood that's a series of cul-de-sacs and no park, your kids are going to play in the street. And I jokingly say, the kids say they don't know how to play on the street, because that's all we had in my neighborhood growing up. The purpose of this is, when it's established and when it's a known community priority, that the city then has the cover, political or otherwise, to continue on what it's already been doing with Town Branch. And by increasing the connections between neighborhoods, making sure we have space for trails and sidewalks and these city parks, but it's not just the city, it's the neighborhoods as well being able to contribute. So if you have a neighborhood association and you want to adopt a park, this is a great opportunity to do that. The city cannot take sole responsibility for this, and communities across the country has realized that that relationship between people who live in the neighborhoods, directly across the street or two blocks away, and the city are going to share in that. It's not that the neighborhood takes complete ownership of it and completely maintains it, but there's communication. And where there's problems, where there's vandalism, where there's kids rioting stuff, or where there's just outright neglect, it can be addressed a little quicker. This starts to highlight, now we add institutionals, the blue. These are schools, the large recreational blocks you see kind of on the perimeter in the northwest, of the airport pops out here. And then also you see the new outpatient hospital off to the east. Institutional land use is something that doesn't have a direct economic benefit, but because of the population that it brings in, at least for the hospital, it's important to recognize that. NSU's the same way. The soccer fields don't bring a lot of people unless there's tournament weekends or things like that, but I'm going to show you all the layers of all the things that kind of add up to create the scenario that we're working with. Any questions thus far? All right. I'm going to move ahead here to the planned elements. It may be a little hard to read, and if you want to get up and see this or you want me to read it, we may be able to, we'll go in detail here in a second. This is how we've broken down each of those pieces that you saw on the map and the physical location of Town Branch to downtown to the university. We take them individually because they speak to different elements of city organization, city government. Land use is, as a map, developers, real estate agents, they will use to say, "Hey, what is the use of this today? What's the use of this in the future?" Community character is mostly about your downtown, about a great historic downtown. Transportation, obviously, is about roads. It's not just about cars, but as we include the intersection of pedestrians and trails and things crossing that. Housing in neighborhoods, we won't spend as much time on. When we get into utilities, infrastructure, and community facilities, there's a lot of work that the city's already done on this. In a constrained budget, it's hard to say, "Hey, we're going to go build some big massive facility where there's not strong community desire for that." So utilities, infrastructure, and community facilities, we will talk about, but we may not get into explicit detail on that. We will spend some time looking at economic development, and part of my focus on this plan, but if you feel like we're covering too much of it and you say, you know, get on with it, then we'll, we'll move on. Freeze through these real quick. I showed this at the last meeting because I think it's really an interesting diagram to show what change can look like. This is South Muskogee looking north, and this is what it would look like, just hypothetically, if we added just a little bit of grassland and a little bit of grass on the sides and some trees. The entranceway to downtown, as you hear people say when they come into Talakwa, if they've left and come back or haven't been here for years, certain times of year, Muskogee looks pretty rough, and all the entranceways, especially in the Downing, can look a little rough. It's an appearance issue, but it's a pride issue. One of the reasons why, on the left side, you see that parking right up to the street, is in a lot of communities, this is common, but we try as a policy level to make sure that any private improvement, which is parking, is not in the public right-of-way. What that means is, if there's a car accident and someone hits the front end of that car that's real near the curb, they're in the street. They're not on private property, but they're in the street. We want to make sure that the, that the public right-of-way is maintained for everyone because there's no sidewalk there. If someone's in a wheelchair or someone needs to get outside the street, there's no safe place for them. Now, obviously, the second part of this is there's not any cars there because the businesses around there don't need that parking during this time of day, and on the other side of the street, there is. This is a policy, and when you come to development policies, the city has to stick with it. And this is the real challenge is, as good stewards of a document like this and the regulations moving forward is, you have to reconcile what the best use is or what the best use of, or best use of public infrastructure is versus private use. And this is essentially free parking in the public right-of-way. Yes, ma'am?
So I love the idea of taking that section and adding grass, but my concern is, this is right near my house, and this is a huge walkable community right here. I mean, it's Walker Haven, and I don't see one sidewalk.
That's true. Now, understandably, we just, we didn't put the sidewalk in over there because it's not, doesn't exist on the other side either. We just mirrored and said, "Hey, if we can make one improvement, what would we do?" Yeah, absolutely right. Our plans do show that anywhere where there's a public street, there should be a sidewalk. It may not be on both sides of the street, because farther down on Muskogee, you have a bridge that's too narrow, and you only got one side of the bridge you can get across. You have to go back a block, cross the street to come back, or risk delay.
But they don't do that.
Yeah, it's risky delay.
They don't have it.
Yeah. Great question, thank you. And these maps are a little hard to read, so we're going to, we're going to move forward and we'll be able to see them in more detail on the plan. This is ultimately, we're going to look at. I know this is boring, but the reality is, the implementation table is where we boil down all of the statements, all the comments, all of the really big things, and we put them in real language, real clear language. If you read nothing else of this plan, please read the land use general, the third column in. There's two parts of this. There's action items and then there's policies. Actions are, the city should go do this, and sometime in City Hall, you've got to figure out who's going to go do it. It may not be exactly one officer or another. The policies are where Planning Commission and City Council should be on the same page. We found that there's broad agreement on a lot of these policies and principles, and we'll pour through the document here in just a second. And Clint, let's go ahead at this point and switch over to that page. Let's go to 116 first. So the way, the way this is broken down, as we kind of described a little bit earlier, we talk about the plan process, what we went through to get to this point for, I'm just going to hold it up so you guys can see it, for this much. I'm just going to tell you guys that much, I'm sorry, but all the work, all of your work is this. The meetings you've come to, the notes you've taken, the surveys you sent out, is all of this part in the front. This is what we listened to you, this is what we said. Here, here's what Talakwa is, here's where we're going, to set up for this back section. And I'll even break this down a little further. The back section has the appendix in it that has all the survey responses, all the data we've collected, and individual survey questions. This is the implementation. These from 205 to 230, 25 pages, front and back. This is really the bulk of the comprehensive plan, and we're going to go through that here in just a second. I do want to have a couple of these maps in your head as we're going through this so we can all see the same thing. This map is important, and I'll, I'll talk to this one over here, but if you'd like me to, I can come and point to it over here on this map as well. Actually, sorry, majority of the room's sitting over here, so I'm going to do this Individually, in the plan, we have, you can scroll down just a little bit so I can see the icons. So we have three things represented here. We have the districts, which is downtown, university, and Downing. So that's this top chunk right here, the dash lines that are around here. We have the downtown node, which is pretty much this area right here. We have village nodes, which are, sorry, the downtown node is the purple, are here. The village nodes are here, 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 and over here. We put the schools on the map as well. Existing parks, which are the darker green, and then future parks, which are lighter green. The purpose of this is, we see the intersection of a couple of these pieces being important to the future, future land use and future land use decisions.
Excuse me, is a village node, node, a neighborhood? What is that?
It's a combination of things. So it could be a, where a trail crosses a neighborhood, crosses a major intersection that also has a high degree of traffic. The purpose of this is not for big commercial, like Dollar General store or something like that, but particularly these three over here, because they're more river-facing, none of these trails exist right now. This, that's why it's future planning. So we see that where we have a trail that's going to connect downtown and the university out to the river, that this is probably the most obvious downhill all the way out to here. This is a safer route to the river than going out Downing would be. It would have to be on highway trail. That neighborhood node, the village node, excuse me, right here, is at that place where if a kayak rental place popped up, if it were a small convenience store, something to get gas, fill your cooler up, it wouldn't be detrimental. Now, it's not a lot of land use. It's probably going to be maybe 6,000, 8,000 square feet at most, so it's not going to be, it's not going to be a Dollar General, more than likely. Be smaller scale than that. But also, out here, we've already heard about plans on the north side, we've seen those drawings. This, these two here are mostly focused on that intersection of the trails, so people riding their bikes, some people walking and wanting to spend time at the rear end of having something off the river, not on the river, because we want to make sure that we protect the, the land around there. And so we're not suggesting there's restaurants or things, you know, crowding the river area over here, but everything is pulled back, and that's about a quarter of a mile back there.
Run your finger along, please. The historic district, it's hard to tell the blues from the reds.
That's a good question. Yeah, it's mostly this area here, right there. There's a little carve-out right here, this is the hill, and this is university, and the old Town Square Mile is right here. Muskogee Avenue up here, and the bend at the university, and then Downing is here and then Choctaw's there.
Okay, I have another dumb question. That thing that you were talking, where is that?
Uh, this, sorry.
Yeah, where is that?
So this actually runs, Town Branch intersects the Illinois. That's, this is the path where Town Branch comes right through downtown, under the bridge, and then out. And actually, it breaks apart a little bit right there, just because it's really flat in that area, and there's going to be a lot of floodplain concerns, flood managers there. And the purpose of this from an economic development standpoint is then recognizing that as a community, if we're going to make investments in one part of town or another, that we've heard downtown is going to exist into the future, and we want to focus on downtown. What you see in the plan is, we're not advocating for new commercial around the perimeter of the loop, of the bypass. As a historical element, the bypass is not going anywhere anyways, so we're not advocating for new commercial that would further suck the life out of downtown. Do you have a question? Okay. And next, let's go to page 189, Clint? Actually, sorry, let's do 168 real quick. Page 168. This is a comprehensive open space and trails map. For those of you who have the, have the page open and can see it, which you'll see here in a second, are some kind of zigzaggy lines. We're not recommending that you cut whole new trails through, you know, all the green spaces in town, but use your existing roadway network. Where you have a street that connects a lot of the community together, to dedicate that street as a future trail connection, or a future safe connection, let's just, let's just be honest about it. This map here, we can find a larger print version of this, and ultimately, I think, Clint and I were talking about having these available so we could walk up to them and see them full-size. These are mostly your existing street network, and whenever you repave a road, you add curb and gutter, you make improvements to it, it's better at that point, even if you're going to do two blocks or three blocks of it, to add those trails, to add those sidewalks as a part of that project. By having this map, everybody who looks at roadway improvements can then say, "Hey, by the way, we have a trail that needs to be on this. We can't just do a repaving or do the cheapest version of it. We need to make sure we got the right-of-way for it first of all, and then also make sure that we have safe places for the trail to exist, but also for people to cross." Yes, sir?
On beat one, you still have a proposed road diet up there that I hope the council voted to take out of this.
We will modify that. We'll get that taken out. That should say, that should say, well, on your version, do you have the version that's, that's been submitted?
Page 119?
Scroll down real quick. Clint, I think we updated this. I just want to make sure. Okay, we'll get that updated. Sorry about that. 168, at the bottom page. That's the last, probably the last remaining one. It should say, "Proposed sidewalk extension, sidewalk and trail extension down Downing to connect to B2," a little part of these there. Thank you for that. This is about clarity. This is about making sure that everybody who is working on street improvements or working on things knows the priorities. If you live in a neighborhood that has a potential trail, when it comes up for, you know, Public Works and Council to look at that roadway, and you can walk out and say, "Hey, by the way, it's part of the comp plan, make sure we get our sidewalk, get our trail out of this." When it's done incrementally, it's not a huge expense to the city. And this is part of the benefit of incorporating this into your existing complete streets policies, which you already have on the books, is to make sure that a street is not just for cars, it's not just for safe passing of people and motor vehicles, but it's for everybody. Every neighborhood is different, and that's why these trails are, are not all like one big trail, one big thing. It's individual to that neighborhood, and it's individual to that corridor. So if you live off to the east or the west of downtown, you will know right now if you have a dedicated sidewalk or a trail coming into your neighborhood.
Hey, Mark, will you talk a little bit about just putting trailway in the, trail in the floodplain? I mean, is that, is that kind of, is that a better fit if it goes along a creek, or what's the? It seems like a lot of these, a lot of these run along, you know, like our Greenway Belt system, and some of it, like T4, for example, runs, I guess they call that Ross branch that goes underneath behind Talakwa lumber, and is that what we want and what we're looking for?
So if it's done right, it should be no impact. You're not raising the level or lowering the level of it. It should be kind of existing, especially Town Branch. It's, it's high up here and it's low down there. There's going to be some, some ups and downs and maybe some, some movement left and right, but the reality is, you can use those trails if they're designed appropriately with the right width. Every other part of the country, they're used, the guys with golf carts go down, and that's how they use it to maintain it. So the mowers will use that to go up and down and make sure it's widened and improved. When it's done right, it should be zero impact, and that's a requirement of development inside the floodplain. Where it crosses the floodway specifically, that's where it will require engineering to make sure if there's a new bridge or new impediment or something that could restrict the flow of water upstream, that it's designed so it has zero impact. So sometimes they do rise up above that to make sure there's enough width for the water to come through. I saw a hand over here.
I was just curious, you were talking about sidewalks. Is there a plan on a newer age width of a sidewalk? I know that, you know, some sidewalks have been put in and like on top of bluff, and they're not very wide. Now, I'm not talking for a bicycle, just, it seems a little narrow, kind of like the bridge on South Muskogee by the old big dolls or car wash. It's real narrow. So is there a plan of a wider sidewalk?
Yeah, there's, there's some national standards that come into play on that. As, as we've seen, everything in the last, you know, 40 or 50 years, everything just kind of gets a little bit bigger. You know, strollers are bigger, everything along the way gets a little bit bigger. The, the old five-foot sidewalk, which is still valid and still installed in a lot of places around the country, is, is perfect for one person walking or two people who know each other, but if, you know, grandma's coming down the street this way, and it's not your grandma, it's a little awkward, you know, passing something on a five-foot sidewalk, especially when there's limbs and debris and cars coming. when there's limbs and debris and cars coming. And we do articulate the width of some of these trails and some of these sidewalks in the plan. Where there's restricted geometries, roadway width, right-of-way, sort of stuff like that, it becomes a little more challenging, because you have to also weigh this with ADA accessibility, which all sidewalks should be ADA accessible unless there's some natural feature that prevents it from being that. But five-foot is, in many places, still a very common width in neighborhoods where there's restricted right-of-way. Where you see dedicated trails that go up to 10 feet, but in some neighborhoods, we're seeing where you can have two lanes that are dedicated, four-foot and four-foot, become an eight-foot. And that's a sidewalk, but it could also be shared use, and so it depends on how you sign it. So it gets a little nuanced, but that's a great question, because it depends on a lot of factors going on. All right, we're going to jump ahead real quick to the implementation side, and we're going to go to page, let's go to 06. We're going to hit some big stuff here. So we're going to distinguish between actions and policies. And can we zoom in and make that kind of full page? And I'll try and, I'll try and work off the graphic here. And if you see something as we're reading through this, can everybody see it? Everybody see the link, see the text? Okay. If you guys want to honestly move up, it's a great opportunity. No more backdoor badgers, or second to backdoor bad. We'll go through a few of these. I'm not going to go through everything, but I will stop along the way. Clint, we're just going to scroll a little bit here in a second. This is a big one that's a big challenge. Modify development codes to allow mixed residential and commercial uses by right in downtown Talquah. That means, like back in the old days, apartments above commercial. The International Building Code actually requires that you have a two-hour fire separation. So if you have those awesome tin ceilings in there, the code says you have to put two layers of drywall against that. And also, you have to have a stairwell that's going to be two-hour rated as well, with a one-hour smoke door. That's prevented cities like Talquah, Guthrie, Pawhuska, a lot of other older towns, from having people move upstairs, because the way the building code reads does not match with what's needed in the town. And so by saying this as an action, and we come to a policy here in a little bit, planning commission will see it, the residents will see it, and somebody owns property can say, hey, if this is our policy, how can I work with carburetor and building development to put something upstairs? The great thing about this is, the way the building code reads, there's not a clear definition -- I said that, let me miraculously state that. There's not a distinction between office uses and residential uses. They require the same fire separation. So if you use the existing building code, which is another name of another code, you get a little more flexibility. And so if an insurance agent wants to go upstairs, and they don't work out, in a couple of years, if you want to turn it into a loft, it's an easier conversion. You still have to have a fire separation between the first and second floor, and there's a couple of ways of handling that. But this as a policy is not Talquah. You guys can point to this and say, hey, I've got a downtown business, or I want to build a building where I can put commercial on the first floor and two apartments upstairs. This allows you to do that. Let's scroll down a little bit. Actually, let's do this. Very bottom of the page, 1, 2. This one right here. Properties adjacent to riparian corridors, as there's some creeks and streams, should employ flood protection practices and protect water quality. No more dumping oil down in the creek, no more, you know, it's not supposed to wash your car in your driveway, it's supposed to do the car wash. What, you guys know water quality. You guys have heard all the stories for years, and you guys have been negatively impacted by that. It's not necessarily stuff coming from Talquah, it's stuff that's coming from upstream. But my understanding is there have been some incidents of sewage and some things leaking into the water. It's not one person, it's everybody that has to play a role in this. This means that as a policy, properties adjacent to riparian corridors means if you back up to a creek, and you have the potential for a trail, this is where the trade-off comes. Please don't dump stuff in the creek. Please use your trail, please respect it. Putting it on paper means when you see somebody, you can say, hey, you know, my neighbor upstream, he's like, you know, cleaning his motorcycle into the creek, or they're back there bathing or something. You know? This is another thing, it seems very innocuous, it's super innocuous, but when it becomes a challenge, you have it on the books. Let's go down to page 1, 2, P5. Right there. ADUs, this is something, accessory dwelling units. And I think we had to go for the existing downtown area first, and those areas near NSU. Under certain regulations, it is allowed to have a garage apartment in the backyard of an existing house. This is another thing that's existed back from years and years ago. We zoned it out, we said, no, only one house per lot. This allows as a policy that planning commission can say, hey, we have it as a policy to allow this, if somebody comes in, and they say, okay, well, under what conditions? How should we do this? How should we allow this? This says it's allowed, under certain conditions, and then you guys can set the rules for that Let's go down a little bit farther. Let's do driveway management, 1, 3, P4. This is one that's huge on Muskogee and on Downing. With a lot of driveways that are not coordinated, it's difficult to get access into and out of the street. The old McDonald's, where you had the long stretch, where you had parking kind of off the street. In the engineering side, you call it a geometry issue, kind of dry. The reality is just bad planning, and it just happens over the years. People pave the front lot, car lots do this, actually, the gas station, I think, is across the street down the way. What this means is, when you have this as a policy, driveway management and curb access from roads should be uniform and provide pedestrian safety features. That means that when you issue a building permit, you may take someone's driveway away. Let's be honest about it. Now, it's not taking the whole driveway. They can still get access to and from their properties. A 53-foot semi-truck can still pull onto the property. It just means you don't need 120 feet of unpaved frontage, where there's no sidewalk and there's haphazard access. I'm sure you guys have seen it, where you pull into the gas station, and there's one car going this way, and another car going this way. It means that you're going to kind of systematize this stuff. It's not, we're not changing it today. Every business does not have to change. But when they come back for a building permit, and when they come to renovate, when the property changes hands, and someone wants to tear the building down and come back, it means that we're going to systematize those driveways. So it'll be maybe two 12-foot lanes, maybe three 12-foot lanes, and the center one is a left-turn lane, something like that. Page 208. New residential land use. Let's do 1, 5, 8, 2. Oh, up a little bit. So we have a couple here we're going to talk about, the differences between private property rights and public good. It's kind of a hard question, or hard to discuss sometimes. But create codes to protect green space, particularly along riparian zones. We're not taking anybody's backyard. If the creek goes through your yard, your legal description goes to the other side of the creek, it's your creek. There are communities where they regulate the, if it's a floodplain, they regulate the floodplain. Colorado's a good example. They have connected community sidewalks throughout the community. They have very different water issues than we have here. We have plenty of water, they have very little water. They've used these trail connections as ways to improve stormwater management. And also, because Vermont are the healthiest two states in the United States, it improves health. How this becomes challenging is, the greenways and bicycle network should be implemented in close coordination with parks, recreation facilities, and open space plans. This basically means, if you're going to put sidewalks, prepare for people to ride their bikes, prepare for people to be walking in your neighborhood. Does anybody have Nextdoor? Oh, he has Nextdoor. Okay. If you're not hearing any of the fun Nextdoor conversations, it's an app that allows you or your neighbors to say kind of crazy things, or just say normal things. Anyways, the last part of this, pedestrian access between neighborhoods and public trails should be dedicated to the city of Talquah. In other communities, not Talquah, but in other communities, there's policies that are created, and we suggest this here, that where it is part of the trail system, where it is considered part of the public good, that the city should approach property owners and purchase easements, not take property. That's not the best solution. It's approached them first, have a conversation, say, hey, we want to put it in the trail system. Can we buy a 20-foot easement across the back of your property that you're not using? We will maintain the floodplain, we will run mowing trucks up and down it, and oh, by the way, you'll have a gate on the back of your house that goes right up to the trail. In Oklahoma, we have a very different land use scenario, and we're very property rights specific. We have to go this route of encouraging people to recognize that trails are important and incentivizing it. So you're buying an easement, instead of doing the M and N domain, which is what other states do. The purpose of this is, someone will say, I don't want people walking in my backyard. I don't want people back there. Well, that's why you have a gate, that's why you have a fence. You have people walking in your front yard anyways. The difference is, you can have control and you can have more safety and security, knowing that the city can establish policies, that if the trails close at midnight and open up at 6:00 in the morning, that that's enforceable, and the police can go back there and arrest somebody if kids are doing something stupid. Yeah, roll a little farther. And 209, go us a little bit on 209. All right, here we go. All right, 61. Sorry, Clint, back out of it. Land use changes conform with the property plan and subsequent amendments. Proposals inconsistent with this plan will require adoption of amendments to maintain the integrity of the future land use plan element of this plan. Would you like to talk? This is, this is the one here, 1, 6, P01.
Good.
Okay. The purpose of this is, when you adopt a plan, is that it should have some continuity to span political administrations, to span the years of people working in city government. The reason for having a plan amendment, which is really common in other communities, where you submit your zoning application, you submit your plan amendment along with that, and you even submit your site plans, you're pretty much ready for construction at that point. One of the things that we've advocated in here is to not add a lot of new commercial land around the community, but to refocus and redefine how that commercial land can be used more efficiently. A little bit higher up here, we talk about reducing setbacks. Right now on Downing, I think you have to have a 35-foot setback or 25-foot setback on parts of it. The whole idea is, if you have more land to develop, especially on Downing, that you don't have to go other places. We already have the people coming and going up and down the street. Muskogee's the same way. The zoning right now, the way it's set up, means that you can only use about 40% of the total billable lot. Without growing the commercial district off into the perimeter of the city and refocusing, we have to change some of those zoning codes to allow new development to occur on existing parcels. And so this specifically says, if you're going to change the zoning to a lot that's designated as non-commercial residential use, that you need to have all of your engineering documents lined up to support that. Just kind of a basic process that exists in a lot of other communities. The purpose is to take politics out of there, you know? So you can point to the plan and say, this is the plan we've adopted, here's where we want commercial, we are going to focus on downtown, we're going to focus on Downing, we're going to focus on areas where we have good intersections between the trails and existing corridors. And specifically, I'll state it, we're not suggesting that there's new commercial out on the bypass, particularly on the west side or on the north side. We see that Talquah's got plenty of growth potential around downtown, even on South Muskogee, Page 2A1, yeah. Downtown improvements should prioritize pedestrian safety to increase store visibility and trips by foot for customers. That's a long sentence. What this means is, we want to try and protect the pedestrian first, we're going to make sure it's accessible to the cars and the customers that are going to come to the businesses. But we have kind of a mismatch, mishmash, up and down Muskogee on the commercial properties. Sometimes we have parking in front, sometimes we don't, sometimes there's no parking at all. The purpose of this is to say, we want to make it safe for people to get up and down first. If we can do that, we feel like we can get people out of their cars. They may park a block away or two blocks away, but if they're going to one business, they're going to pass other businesses along the way. When they pass those other businesses, you get to see something you may need, something you can discover. And that's the whole point of how the mall was designed. The mall wasn't designed as just this big ring of stuff that you're going to, you know, be herded around, it's to go discover. Mall and downtowns are essentially the same, they're just inverted. The difference is, the mall is very pedestrian safe. We need to make our downtowns that safe. This bottom one is very important also. Village centers, or village nodes, will be contextually sensitive to the surrounding neighborhoods to create an identity to that, should we say, to that area of town.
Excuse me, I have another question.
Yes, ma'am.
This is a dumb question, Maggie. Where does downtown end?
That's a great question. That is awesome. Architecturally speaking, it ends at Town Branch on the north, and probably about Fourth Street on the south, and probably the street west of Muskogee. College on the west, and then probably Town Branch on the east.
I was wondering about the-
Yeah.
The south end is what I was concerned about.
We discussed this a lot internally, about how to handle each of these vintages of developments. You've got the early 1900s, you've got the 1920s and 30s, you've got the 1950s and 60s, and you have all the 2000s stuff, the Walmart and the research down there. That, that's the evolution of the American economy. It's evident right here in Talquah. They all play by different rules, and that's why we define downtown specifically in those. We don't do a lot of, we don't spend a lot of time addressing Walmart, load, all this sort of stuff down there. I made that correction a little bit.
All right. So you brought up a good question. Where is the Talquah grows? And there's not room on Downing Street, there's not room on Muskogee for new national franchises. Where are those going, other than for south?
So, yeah, so you probably have about 40 years of commercial growth capacity right now, right now. Just dirt, just dirt between here and the edge of town. You don't really need to grow that much. The population of Talquah is increasing, but because some of the erosion of the student population, and the fact that a lot of professional jobs have been sucked off into Tulsa and Northwest Arkansas and Muskogee, there's been a lot of loss on the population side. I think you right now have two dorms that are completely empty right now on the university campus, and there's also a pretty high vacancy rate around campus. So there's plenty of room to grow internally. And we, I think we estimate that it's about a 40-year horizon before it gets to the point-
I was talking about national franchises that require bigger spaces.
Yeah.
Because you can't put a national franchise on Downing Street, because the-
Well, Bronx, Bronx went there. I think Bronx is on land use.
Bronx is moving.
Oh, where they moved. I didn't hear that.
That's up there.
All right.
Because they don't-
There's room to grow to the size that they would like to be.
Having dealt with Bronx on two site plan projects, yeah, theirs is, they want to accommodate four buses on two acres. They're the end of the soccer game thing. If they don't have that on that site, they'll find a site for that. So, yeah, Downing Street may be the best word, ultimately. Just like a lot of other university towns that have the franchise area of town, and they have, you know, like Main Street in Stillwater, or the strip in Stillwater, even at UCO downtown, I don't think there are any franchise-type businesses there. They can still thrive. It doesn't have to be national franchises. There are lots of vacant out parcels along north and south Muskogee that are not being utilized right now. Two of the big kind of shopping center areas, those will ultimately probably be reconfigured to do that. UCQT buy and tear down and rebuild, they're not constrained by having existing buildings in the way there. The national franchises, if they want to be here, they'll find a way to do it.
Most of those go off of traffic count, don't they? I mean, isn't that the biggest driver for them, is traffic count? So you can expect anything south of the bypass. I mean, I would imagine for any national franchise, the first thing they're going to look at is how many cars per day pass in front of it.
Well, that's one of the issues that I've brought up many times, is park yield. Well, that's one of the issues that I've brought up many times is park yield and bypass. Having that listed as a residential reserve instead of a commercial.
And I appreciate you bringing it up.
Page 105.
Okay.
If you'd bring it up. It's the third busiest intersection inside the inner loop. And that's where a national franchise is going to look there.
Now let's zoom in, zoom in there if you can. We're in 105, yeah.
Where the trailer house is at.
Do you want to go ahead and say your...
No, I want to see, you know, he brought up the exact argument that I had and I've brought it to you all several times. And you even beforehand said that yes, that's the great place and that's where the traffic location would be, but it's not in there. So I just want to hear what you say again about...
Yeah, and to this point, it's your property and it's currently residential. And we show it as future residential because we took the existing zoning out. And to the point I made earlier, we didn't add more zoning that's commercial. Say, hey, we need commercial all over the city. We focused it around specific areas, Downing and downtown specifically.
If you would go back and lay in point to that property right there. And that's the third busiest intersection and only intersection that has land to be able to do without heading south and going further south.
It is, and like I said to you earlier, there's no reason why you couldn't file the zoning application out and get it as own commercial. It's just when we collected our documents, we took everything that we were given that had existing land uses on it, including county data. And if it was existing residential, we pretty much kept it existing residential. But again, we did not look at individual parcels. We did not get down to your property, your property, your property. It's not that level of detail. It's a citywide comprehensive plan following the big picture strategies. And so you, you can file an application tomorrow if you want it. It's not going to hurt anything for you to do that. You just have it on file. It probably runs out after six to 90 days. Yes, sir.
Did you factor in the declining student population that's resident? Because most of this stuff is online anymore. You really don't need to be in town.
So that, yeah, that's a challenge. The universities and especially the state are competing nationally for students. As you guys are all aware, Talalqua draws mostly from 45 minutes from here, if not from here. There are people, there are a lot of international students, there are people who will come in. But it's much more challenging and less economically viable for this cohort to go through school, incur debt and have that traditional four-year college experience and then leave college. Just as employable as anybody who didn't go to college because they have four more years of work experience. It's a national trend. It's not helped by a state budget cuts from a, from a higher ed standpoint. It's also, to your point, not helped by the fact that there's a lot of freer access to academic credits across platforms. It also didn't help that there's a Broken Arrow campus where you can go attend classes and live in Tulsa. And all of those things together are not a negative though, because people can go to college for the experience. People will come here for a program, they come here for that. NSU's not going away. I, it's got a great history, it's going to be here for a long time. It's actually a great economic generator. We've got to find ways to enhance that experience so that people will say, hey, Stillwater is, and don't, don't take this the wrong way, it could be the next Boulder, it could be the next Norman, it could be the next Austin. And I'm not kidding, 50 years from now. But it could be that place that people are like, you know what? Or like Oklahoma City was in 2004. It's pretty rough, but people came back and said, you know, I didn't find a job here. This is okay, things are happening. And that can happen. And I would say that Talalqua is the only place in Oklahoma where that kind of combination of trails, of amenities, what we need to do is find the job opportunities. So to this point...
Mark, a question.
Yep.
So just to be clear, the areas on a bypass that are marked residential right now are only marked residential because that's what they were when we put this together? This is not a...
Should be, should be.
Gee, this is where we really think this ought to be necessarily. Because I'm thinking if a Target suddenly decided they wanted to come to Talalqua, I don't want Target downtown, but if you look at what's currently zoned commercial, really all you're talking is that Muskogee corridor and anywhere around the bypass where you might want to encourage a larger business to come in like that is currently residential. And so when you say that we're going to discourage turning residential into commercial, if we haven't looked at where we really think we want commercial to be in the future and made that a part of this plan, I think we've missed a window of opportunity here.
I, I would be surprised, having been in the economic development world a little bit. If Target comes, find a place for them, absolutely. I mean, that's one of those slam dunk businesses. Recognize though that the jobs that are created at Target are going to come from somewhere else until the population changes. And so that's where the...
And I was using Target as an example, but any major chain type business like that, you know, we've talked about, gee, wouldn't it be great if there were a Home Depot in addition to the Lowe's? Or, you know, if we get to the point where we did actually attract some other large business, if we haven't designated where those commercial areas are going to be other than south Muskogee, then aren't we just locking ourselves into south Muskogee?
That's the only place they'd locate. I mean, just realistically. What they would more than likely do...
When the new road to the north is enhanced, you don't think that there will be some growth going that direction? Or that we wouldn't want to drive some growth that direction?
It could, but you would be encouraging residential development. If you're going to talk about increasing population over what's there right now, it's all about traffic counts. And so if your traffic counts are X today and they increase by 10% into the future, you would look at what businesses would meet that threshold of needing 10% more traffic in order to be viable. We already know Dollar General, there's two frankly Dollar Generals up, up the highway. There's a pretty high threshold of population that would need to be coming and going out of that, not just passing. Because what they do is they take the traffic counts at the one mile, three mile, five mile. They want to see people who are stopping and living just outside. That would mean people are living outside of Talalqua and probably spending their money outside of Talalqua. Or just because we're the municipal boundary and there's just not a lot of opportunity.
Okay, so, so you're basically saying where we have zoned residential right now is going to stay residential and we should not consider growth in those directions?
That's what we've heard, yes. Yeah, and we've reflected that in the plan.
What do you mean by heard?
As I understand it though, that would mean unless there was a big opportunity that decided if we wanted an Amazon distribution center and we hit their profile, then we as a city could decide that that piece of residential property that Amazon has honed in on, that we want to rezonate commercial and invite Amazon here for jobs.
Absolutely, yes, good.
Thank you.
Yeah. And the purpose of this is, in the scenario where you are right now, we're not actively going out and trying to compete with Prior Creek or with Muskogee or with Henrietta frankly, or Tulsa for that matter, or Northwest Arkansas. We heard from a lot of people that said, you know, Talalqua's great because it's, it's quiet, it's a great community, it's kind, it's nice. And then we heard other people say in the same breath, but it's also on the way to nowhere. There's no major highway that cuts through here. So it's kind of a two-way story. It works to your benefit because it's a great place to live and it's nice, but at the same time, it is a challenge. It is a challenge to bring businesses here that require a high traffic flow because there's not an I-40 or a 412, something coming through. Where these policies are designed is where Talalqua is today and based on your past, based on the demographics, based on where you are, what's the most viable option forward? What's, what can protect current businesses and focus current businesses so that there's not a, a big growth in commercial land use that continues to deteriorate downtown? And so the policies are, you know, clearly stated, we focus on downtown, we focus on Downing. And we found the strategies that work with that. So on the north side of town, you know, we had a hard time actually getting the plans out of ODOT, of what, what they were actually going to do. And, you know, we asked for a long time, what's the justification for it? Like frankly, it didn't make sense to me. But if it's, if there's safety issues, if there's geometry issues or something, that's, that's ODOT. And unfortunately, none of us control ODOT. Unless you do, raise your hand. And that, that's, that's hard because that's, it's going to be a huge change for the community, especially for the folks that are out in county. But to, to address specifically about that, having dealt with some large retailers before, they know right now, they will tell you right now and they will give you a number. They can say if you have 6,000 more people, 8,000 more people, they'll hand you the demographic profile to say, here's a community that we're building our next target. Here's what you need to hit. And, and that's how you know if Target's going to come. The land use is a later thing because there's some bigger thresholds need to be hit first. Let's go real quick to, and let me go one more, one more comment here. I said Talalqua's a unique place and I'm not, I'm not kidding when I say that. There is no other place that has a really great branch going right through the middle of it. A cool campus, a great downtown. By focusing on that, we're not turning away from the other commercial areas. We're just saying that the people are saying, we want amenities, we want things to do. The downtown businesses from what I've heard aren't busting at the seams. They're not turning people away, there's not 45-minute ways. We need more people focusing on downtown. We need to bring more people in from outside to come to downtown. Not just Chili's, not just to the casino, you know, not just people who work here and then leave and go home. We have to find a way to unlock that potential. There's more downtown land than there is in a lot of other cities and it's not being utilized. Yes, sir.
You might have touched on this if you have forgiveness, but if you, is there any way to possibly get people that have businesses downtown that have been shut down for years to somehow either sell? Or, I mean, is there anything that can be done about that? Because there's a lot of... I think that's really hurting downtown.
There's, there's a couple of strategies and we actually allude to some of that here. The first one is if all the businesses that are active start focusing on their storefronts and doing some interesting things, there are some, there are some businesses doing a really great job. Treat your downtown like an art gallery where on Friday night, even if the businesses are closed, you know, you can't walk down the street with a drink, get a coffee, get your soda, but go walk downtown and see if it's a fun place to go experience. Then walk it under the, under the vision of, what if there's something to do here? What if a business was open? What if you could actually like walk into some of these businesses after eight o'clock at night? The best thing to do is encourage people through a couple of things. You can treat that art gallery idea like a walking district party where once a month, and you guys already have a lot of great downtown festivals, not to add more to it, but you can encourage people to say, hey, we'll go clean your storefronts. We'll go take the cobwebs down. We'll get some people to paint some murals on the inside of the glass or go set something up. Someone is doing something creative here in Talalqua right now and they'd love to show it off. You don't have to charge them, right? You know, you get a small insurance policy and make sure that people aren't coming and going out of it. To activate a downtown, you have to have people walking in front of those businesses. It's the only way it works. Get people out of their cars, get them walking, but they have to see something. So it could be an art show, it could be any number of things. The next thing after that is code enforcement. So police and fire have a responsibility. And in a lot of other communities, there's a policy that the fire chief inspects every commercial structure every year. And I don't know if we do that comprehensively, should. It can be invasive for businesses that have, you know, big code violations. But the reality is, if you've had a restaurant that gets shut down by the health department, everybody asks, oh man, how many times have I eaten there? And they have health code violations, it's because there's not enough inspectors to come through. So having a, the, the fire chief come through and do an inspection with your building permitting department is actually a way to improve the health of the people who work there and also safety. But if you have an abandoned building, it's also a good opportunity for you to say, hey, by the way, you got a hole in your roof and your building's going to fall down. And, and you need, you need that kind of yearly inspection or something to happen. And that's with a couple of buildings that fell down a few years ago, it's something that just could have happened, so. But there's a lot of strategies. I'm sure if you wanted to talk to downtown folk, the chamber, there's lots of ideas about what to do. Yes, sir.
Before you leave this page, I'd like to get a little clarification. It sounded like you told an audience member, this is a representation of what we have.
Right.
Also, it sounded like you told the city council, this is a plan that they should refer to when they get applications.
Right.
Is it a plan or is this what we have?
So it's, it's a combination. It's a future land use plan. So we have to respect what it, what everything has come to us beforehand. So years of land use, years of, you know, where a school is located, you know, we don't want a lot of intense commercial around. So it's, it's a combination thereof. It is the roadmap moving forward. It is the future land use plan. And so it should be what the planning commission makes recommendations off of for new zoning changes or new land use changes. And so it, it, it's not a, it's, it's not one specific thing. It is a representation as an image of what should happen in the future.
How can it be both our past and our future?
So what we're talking about, the creek, the creek's not going anywhere. So that's part, that's part of the existing conditions. And so where, where we have population growth, particularly around the south side of town and we have major traffic concerns there, we just lost our TVs over there. There, there's an, there's an underlying, let's say, understanding that what we have today, we're not going to wholesale change, right? We're going to respect where the schools are, we're going to respect where MSU is, all the corridors. That's, that's part of where we are today. Where we layer on this is what we've heard through this process. And we've heard, hey, we have trails or we want trails or we want safe neighborhoods or we want access to parks or frankly, we want to go to a commercial area and not have to spend 20 minutes in traffic from one side to the other. We can encourage those types of better land use patterns through this process.
I'm not questioning the process. I'm just questioning how this map can both reflect where we are right now and where we need to be in the future. Because to me, that implies that we expect no change between now, which has grown up just kind of haphazard
Yeah.
and where we really want it to be. And so I'm, I'm just, this one map has me confused. I'm not concerned about the process and about what we've gone through here. I just don't see how this is a true representation of where we need to be 10 years down the road.
And the easiest way to address that is, and I'll get your, your questions back, is that the, the ultimate question is this, are we going to grow outside or are we going to grow inside? Is the city going to grow outside around the bypass? Are we going to grow farther south and annex more land in? Or do we have the capacity with existing land use to accommodate future growth with no increase in commercial land? That's, that's it. There's, there's another 40 years of growth without having to increase the length of any of the corridors, but can grow internally. That's it.
So we've got this big blue block here that is the Methodist Home Property because it's institutional. And we know that it's on the market and we suspect that probably will be residential or at least a good part of it should be residential. Is this not the time to at least designate which pieces of that ought to be what? Because it's not institutional or won't be institutional necessarily?
Yeah, that's good. When did that go on the market? Last year?
I know, it's been like nine months ago.
Okay, all right. I, I admit, I'd heard rumblings of that whenever they had the sewer problem, but I did not know it was officially on the market. So it, that may be something that could be the first thing the planning commission looks at or we could look at through this process. So by the way, no, the one thing this document is not supposed to do is speculate on individual land deals. If somebody comes in and wants to buy it and make it a church camp, something like that, yes.
So this planning commission, who exactly is that?
I mean, city of Talalqua's planning commission.
Zone.
Planning, sorry.
That's, that's...
My, my question is, is what happens if none of these people are on the, on the board when it comes up to make a change and they don't know that? You said that this was just kind of an idea, but this is the way it should go. Is there going to be an addendum attached to this that says...
So, yeah, there's more clarity, there's more clarity to this. And we say specifically, and, and it may also help to have a larger, larger version of this because it's really hard to just look at this in the way it is without being full scale. That's just a natural challenge.
But there is something in there that says, these are just suggestions and that this isn't the way, this isn't what I totally say should happen?
No, it, it says the opposite. It says that the planning commission should follow this plan. Should follow this plan.
So that's not necessarily what you're telling all of us?
Well, so if I, if I can get this right, Mark, I mean, and I refer to them as missing teeth, right? So it sounds to me like you're encouraging based upon this plan for a more of a dense, a dense plan of commercial growth as opposed to creating missing teeth by skipping a vacant lot or skipping a dilapidated building and, and which there in turn encourages growth south or on the bypass or whatever. or on the bypass or whatever and still leaving those missing teeth inside, is that right?
Yeah, and the real benefit here is by advocating for a type of plan is you don't have to extend water and sewer service to continue to grow. And that's where the fiscal challenges come in. If you want to pave another, you know, six or eight lane miles of city streets to maintain in the future, you can do that, you can add those streets. The reality is, we already have a lot of streets that need maintenance, a lot of streets that have, you know, challenges to them. This plan is very, you know, very specific in focusing on, like I said, the two areas because there's already plenty of capacity. There's already plenty of good assets there that aren't being fully utilized. You know, downtown's not busting at the seams, we have a lot more, we have easily a doubling of number of businesses in downtown. That means you need almost a fourfold increase in pedestrians walking around downtown. So it, it's hand in hand both with technical sides of planning, but also getting people to realize you could lose what you have if you don't go, if you don't spend money downtown, so. And I apologize if I haven't been articulate about the, about this, this map in particular. By dedicating a future land use plan, planning commission would look at that and say, here's where we're going to focus. But because we're not advocating for new commercial on the periphery or a lot of dramatic change, this is basically honing in on what you got, fixing the small stuff, not spending a lot of extra money. I heard someone advocate, someone say, how much money are we obligated to spend out of this plan? Like you can spend nothing and you could still do this plan. You could still fill in, you could put on the business community and private property owners to do this. This is getting the problems that exist in the zoning, just getting the, you know, the smaller polit- political things out of the way. So everybody can point to this and say, all right, this has 90% of what we want. They don't have 100% of it, but if a majority frankly, a planning commission and council agree, that's enough.
Home Depot, Chick-fil-A or some supermarket comes in, Home Depot, that's going to agree. So where does that go inside of this? Is it something that fit in downtown?
No, it's not, it's not intended to. It should not go in downtown, absolutely not. And I'll say this, as an architect, having drawn the site plans and been involved with this, they've got it figured out. They, if they're going to come to Talakwa, they already know where it would fit. They don't wake up one day and say, hey, let's go look at Talakwa. If you walk into Bentonville, Arkansas, they have a profile for every city where Walmart's going to go for the next five to 10 years. And they're, and they're watching those communities to see how they grow and how they develop. Part of this process, what I learned from Jocktop, is how you can get the stuff lined up and make it easy and kind of ease development, get development going. I'm a pro development person, I'm a pro growth planner. And so under that lens, you know, I would have to say, you know, they're going to want 17,000, 18,000, Home Depot, 17,000, 18,000 traffic count and a stable population of 24,000 to 25,000 people minimum. I don't know a community where they're locating less than 25,000 people, less than 40,000.
Mark, one of the things that I wanted to see happen here is for us to get away from having to bring every time I knew something comes to town, we've got to go get it rezoned. Because we have that happening, not every council meeting, but pretty regularly. We've got zoning issues coming here. And so one of the things I was hoping this plan would allow us to do is define some major swaths that would be where things could come in and be predetermined so that we don't have to bring every time something comes in to zoning.
Yeah, to that point, the zoning changes are inevitable. I think that's part of a changing community. There's, there's some recognized flaws in the way current, the older zoning codes are written. Newer codes in many communities, Rogers, Arkansas has one, I think Fayetteville has one. They have what's called a form-based code, which means it doesn't matter what's in the building as long as the building is shaped like what the community wants it to look like. And if you look at the zoning right now, there's, it's a cascade zoning and those cascades mean that if you're in one district, you can basically have all the other elements ahead of that, you guys are aware of this. It won't eliminate it and that's, that's one of the challenges. The comprehensive plan lays the overarching umbrella framework. The subdivision regulations tell you how it should look, where the roads and streets should be aligned. And then planning commission uses those to say, okay, it hits the goals of the planning committee, it's the goals of the comprehensive plan, meets the engineering technical of subdivision regulations. And it's a type of use that we want in the community that does the public benefit. So unfortunately, it won't eliminate all those zoning changes. What we do advocate for though, and I'll, I'll dig for it and if I can't find the response now, is one of the recommendations we have on Downing is to loosen the zoning restrictions so that you can have more different types of businesses. So you have, I mean, we don't have tanneries, we don't have mining operations, we don't have a lot of things that existed in the zoning or do exist in the zoning code today that just don't exist now. Pretty much everything that we know about our economy and the businesses that we visit on a weekly basis should be able to fit anywhere up and down Downing. Maybe not all in downtown because those building types are a little bit different. We don't need a lot of drive-throughs around downtown, but it won't eliminate that, but I'll, I'll dig into a couple of specific policies that talk about streamlining the zoning code or eliminating frankly, zoning districts and compiling them into new zoning districts, so.
Thank you, Mark.
One other page I'd like to look at really quick and I'm going to open up for other questions. If I can go back and find this really quick. And this is where we did step outside of, sorry, 115. No, sorry. Let me find this. 130, page 130. So who's been stuck on traffic on South Muscogee coming into town? Come on, everybody knows. That's one thing we're actually like, we'd love for downtown to be strong. How come the students don't shop at my business? And I'm sick of traffic on South Muscogee. And so this is big picture and this map is going to be a little hard to read, but I want you to just consider, if you're anywhere in Oklahoma, anywhere else in Oklahoma and you've got this mile grid of streets and bridge goes out on your way home, it's three miles out of your way, but you've got a redundant way of getting around. There's a challenge and a benefit to the way our section line roads are designed. Talakwa's different because you have some hills, you get the fire, you get the Illinois River. We don't have redundant ways of getting into and out of town, north and south. So what we say, and this is outside of the city boundary, and Clint, you're going to have to help me with the roadway names here, I'm sorry. The south of the casino, out to the Cherokee Heritage Center?
Willis Road.
Willis, okay. From Willis up here, this is a gravel road, drove it multiple times. If something happens and there is a tornado that comes through town or something and you're blocked off, you have Park Hill, which is a pretty good road here, but I think it dead ends right here and you have to turn east and west. We're advocating for a connection and this, there should be a line right here that connects over. But you need, you need two ways, at least two ways of getting north and south of town. One of the reasons why traffic backs up on Muscogee is because there's no duplicate way. And what's the other, is it, what's the other way? Stick Ross. Stick Ross is the other one. So if you come down here and you loop your way down, if you, if we could connect through here, then people could come the backroads up through here. Again, it's not an economic policy, we're not saying people should use, you know, we're wholesale like, you know, turning a highway, this road into a highway. We're saying we need redundant access. These are all outside the city, we don't have any power, you don't have any power to do this. But if you play well with county and you play well with the tribes, play with other people, this is going to serve an economic benefit for everybody. It's going to be a public safety benefit as well. It's not going to take money away from the city of Talakwa because it's going to be the people who live in Talakwa that are going to know. If it's 25 miles an hour through there, you're not going to, you're not going to see the high school kids coming through going to the lake that way. It's a slower way of doing it. You just need that redundancy. And this is a little bit outside of the traditional planning because it falls outside of the city limits. But because there are not a lot of measures to alleviate that, we see this as a possible viable alternative. It won't solve everything, but it's a start. And so consider, again, we don't have the many, but a small connection right here, an improvement of the road and then an extension. This is, this is really only one mile extension and three quarters of it is outside of the city limits. This one in particular, it would be a great way to access the trails, kind of a lover's lane. It's very scenic, if you haven't been out there, do that. You could get nailing it there, you could get, kick up rocks and break a windshield. So it's, it's a relatively safe road, but you don't want fire trucks on it and you don't want to be on it when fire trucks are on it. Yes, sir?
So you've got traffic circles that are supposed to be at Water and Downing Street?
Yeah, that's what we, yeah. That's what ODOT, I think, actually recommended too. If I remember right, I think that was, that was in one of their schematic plans. I think that's the only place that we, and they could be a Downing and the bypass. But again, that, that would all depend on traffic counts and.
And then there's another one south.
Yeah, there's another one south.
Yeah, and that is, yeah. Can you scroll down just a little bit?
Nothing like scrolling, no. Right there.
This, yeah, and this, that's a challenging geometry right there just because all those roads diverge. I mean, between Town Branch and Muscogee, you've got a lot of north-south traffic that goes through there. We can't do a full engineering study through this process, but we've recognized that and at least that if nothing else, if you can just kind of line up the intersections a little bit better, which you'd have to buy somebody's private property to do that, that would help. And water is the, I mean, people were speeding up and down water 35 miles an hour, zipping back and forth when traffic got heavy on Muscogee. It's not a safe place, especially if somebody's on a bicycle, which is pretty common as well. Yeah, we have a day down here at the Y down there as well.
Wait, so this is intersection redesign?
No, I, I, sorry, sorry. Yeah, that, traffic circle there. And I think we did the same thing at Downing.
No, Downing and Water is a traffic circle.
Well, and ODOT has proposed one on 82 at the Y.
We do, should, oh, impact study, sorry.
On 80, 82, heading out at the Nation? A four-ring traffic circle?
It's not blocked there. Just one. The outbound lanes don't go into the circle, they just head out, go south. The inbound, you get in the circle anyway, go out to the lake.
It's a, it's a T, it's a T circle, if that makes sense. The south, yeah, southbound, just kind of bounce around it.
Yeah, it pretty much stays the same when you're going south.
We can dive into any more questions?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am?
You were talking about in the beginning, densifying the downtown business area. And then you talked about the ripper and the closeness to Town Branch. And I am visualizing in our downtown area from First Street North, there is not a density of businesses along what ultimately became Water Street. But how, how does the fact that that runs across the street and close to Town Branch? What is the impact there? I didn't get it.
So we don't want to build in the floodway. We can't build in the floodway, we try not to build in the flood plain. They're two different things. There's been plenty of flooding in downtown, that's been kind of like known for quite a while.
Well, they're aware of that.
Yeah, so we have to make sure that any new development does not have a negative impact on that. Where it's in the flood plain, we don't want to encourage that. But there are parcels on the west side of water that are outside of the flood plain that can be developed. In particular, we want to make sure though that the zoning code doesn't prevent that kind of development. And I think that's the way it's kind of been written for a long time is if you don't have a certain amount of frontage, you can't build on your parcel. Well, your frontage is along the creek.
Okay, thank you for elaborating, I get it.
Has anybody, just one other example real quick. I think Breckenridge, Colorado is another community that has water running through the downtown area. Has anybody else been to some other communities that have really nice creeks that run through Cedar Rapids? Iowa is one of the most larger. There's something unique here. Like using that as an asset, instead of turning our backs to it, is really kind of focusing restaurants, putting, putting the restaurant patios out there. Not just one restaurant, but there's lots of opportunities to do that. And the land use plan, the trails plan, it all works together with that, so. I'm open to other suggestions, we're at an hour, hour and a half right now. Yes, sir?
One of the phenomena that's happened over recent times is the infill with the Cherokee Nation. Now, we all know Cherokee Nation is a major partner in the community and a major driving force in the community. But some of that commercial space that's on Main Street is now occupied by Cherokee Nation agencies and facilities and such. Just what's, what's the pros and cons of that kind of thing? It's not a commercial entity in other words, even though it's taking up commercial space.
I don't see it as a con right now. I think this is where market conditions start to play a role in that. As you're all well aware, you need a collection of businesses in order to create a district, to create an experience. If you have to drive five miles in every direction to get stuff, you do it, you do it gradually and you burn your entire Saturday getting there. The market conditions for a downtown are really unique. They haven't changed much frankly, in the last, you know, 100 years. What's different now is customers have a choice and that choice is convenience and experience. Downtown gives you the experience, now we've got to bring in the convenience. And we've heard from a lot of people that say that there's not parking in downtown. Well, there's not strict parking in downtown. There's plenty of places to park your car. You may, you know, you may have to park where it feels uncomfortable. But the city blocks and the arrangement of how they are laid out, there are lots of areas of downtown that is a grass strip and it could be a parking space, a dedicated public free, let's say it's free parking space, everybody loves free parking. It's not necessarily that there's, there's not parking downtown. It's not a block from where you want to go or right in front of where you want to go. And that, that's the mindset we have to give people to say, you have to get out of your car and walk. But if you have mobility issues, it should be ADA accessible and it should be easy for those people to get there as well. Yes, ma'am?
So my concern is about the downtown historic district. And when you talk about putting businesses, adding businesses into downtown, I assume there's going to be some sort of regulations as preserving the historic buildings. While business owners, it's all about the numbers. Restoring a historic building is very expensive. It is a lot cheaper to go build a new building. The other issue with that is, is that, so incentives, you know, and who says this one's historic and this one isn't and the continuity to make it look, you know, the same, you know, all historic buildings instead of a new build and then a historic one and then a, you know, all mixed up.
Our downtown is not a historic district. Your downtown is a historic district.
Well, but it has historic buildings. I mean, I have a building that was built around 1900. Okay, so that's pretty historic.
But is it on a national register?
No, and I could speak to that if anybody would allow me to.
Well, let me just finish my question real quick and then I'm, I'm finished. The other thing is, I mean, if you're in business, it's all about numbers. You've got to make money. And so if you, if, if there's no incentive to go ahead and rehab and put a business in, the next thing is you have to have traffic, you've got to have people. They've got, it's how many times they come past your business. So I just, there's a lot to get from here to there.
And the two things I would say is we have been successful, I say the preservation community, we have been successful in beating back the attempt to remove the state historic tax credits. Because if those are not available, then I think you're not allowed for the federal if you don't have your state sponsor or it's only a portion of it. We're fortunate to still have those tax credits. If you have a building and you want, you qualify and you go through the process of maintaining that historic structure to the state historic preservation office standards, you qualify for tax credits. You don't have to just appreciate the tax credit, you can turn around and sell those. And that's how a lot of people use that to finance that.
Does Talakwa have, can we do that?
You can individually do that.
Because I looked it up and I thought that it had to be done by, like you're saying, designated historic. So I can go whittier and toss it.
It just makes it easier if, if it's a whole district.
Right.
It makes it, maybe the whole district's going to abide by it, but we don't have that.
We don't have that.
You just have to do, you have to do building by building.
Individually.
Okay.
But it is possible.
All right.
The city. The city, by ordinance, does have historic designation, designated districts. And the downtown is listed in that ordinance. It is not a national register designated district and will never be, in my estimation, having dealt with three different times, the people from the Oklahoma Preservation Office coming to look at our historic downtown area and saying that it had to be individual designation, not a whole blah from Fourth Street to the university being historic district. That's not going to happen, at least not in the foreseeable future.
So the only way to get tax credits is to, an individual has to go through that process and...
Are you, are you a freak, Whitney Gru?
Now, the other thing about our downtown, the other thing about our downtown is it is an opportunity zone, so there are tax credits for investment if it's capital gains that you're reinvesting.
And I'll reference one thing here real quickly. This is on page two thirty, action item seven five A two, sorry, it's very long. Continue to remove barriers to redevelopment of underutilized buildings and empty lots. There's just some things in the way in the zoning code and redevelopment code that make you do a whole bunch of things. Particularly in here, we say that you need to work with the building permitting department. If you have an underutilized building and you want to just use the downstairs floor, you can get permits for just the downstairs. You don't have to get the permits for the whole building. And that's a special exception you can ask for, a property owner can ask for. It's better to do some of that work up front to provide that opportunity in the future. But as you'll see in here, there's a lot of just remove barriers, you know, take down some of the, some of the expensive things that have to get done. But it means, it means putting a lot of work on the building permitting department and not providing exceptions, so have to play fair with everybody. Everybody needs to really abide by the code, but there's some flexibility in there.
Mark, we no longer have a quorum, not that that means that we have to wrap this up, but...
Okay. I'm going to hang around for ten, fifteen minutes. If you guys have any other questions afterwards, I'll be here to answer any questions.
I just, one quick question. Last special meeting, we discussed medicinal marijuana, dispensaries grow operations, blah, 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 and Airbnb. Was that included in this? Do we have an Airbnb district? Was that addressed?
No, so that's, that's not necessarily a zoning issue. That would be more a business licensing issue, the way I see it. I'm not in part of the discussion that you guys are having with that. But as far as a permanent business permitting issue, I think it's great. I think you can limit that. Ultimately, it comes to a property rights issue where in the city of Oklahoma, no one is required to disclose if they're renting or leasing their property. We haven't had a court ruling on that yet. Now, if you want to operate a business and you have a hotel tax, you do have to permit that hotel tax, but you have to have a business license to do that. On the medical marijuana thing, that's so new, I'm not really shaking out yet, but...
I think it does reference zoning and licensing in regards to short-term rules. It encourages us to allow them in some way, either zoning or licensing.
Yeah, but having the regulations in place, yeah. All right, thank you. Yes, sir?
Just sort of a question and comment related to your situation. Are the, and since two individuals are still here, are there resources with Main Street Association that would help out an individual? Like the state architect that works with Main Street and such, that would help out an individual to file that paperwork or go through the...
Oh, God, I'll separate out that Drew address Main Street. For seven years, we were a certified local government city. And under those ramifications, there were tax credits available. But you cannot maintain that unless code enforcement concerning historic buildings occurs. And it didn't occur, and this occurred way back in the nineteen nineties. And those code enforcements did not incur. So we lost our CLG, our certified local government designation, which would have offered some opportunities monetarily, monetarily. There's nothing to say that the city can't at some point reexamine that and come back into that. Now, as to your address on Main Street, let's, let Drew answer your portion.
Well, there is, there's, like we were saying, there's tax credits. And Main Street can help with it, but you have to follow the process. And most people don't want to follow the process. It's lengthy and it takes a lot of, yeah. That's what I found in Talakwa anyway. But the ones that have, you ought to see what they've done with their buildings and, you know, they might spend a million dollars and get, you know, four hundred thousand they back.
It has to be an investment-grade property. I mean, it has to be where the financing's lined up and you've got a tenant lined up that's going to pay market rents. And there's just not enough business in downtown Talakwa right now to justify that. That's why we advocate for flexibility in the zoning code at this point.
So, okay, so I'm, the suggestions that the comprehensive plan is offering, I'm starting to get a little confused because I know we've been talking about like commercial zoning and tax incentives. So are we leaning more towards commercial, like increasing our commercial? Or are we still trying to focus a little bit on residential?
It's chicken and egg, so the commercials is going to follow rooftops. So there's what's called threshold analysis or threshold studies. So if you're a population of seventeen, eighteen thousand people, here's the effective business rate. If you have more businesses, then you have fewer people going to those businesses. And so it's a relationship with earned income or disposable income and saturation. And so that's a very academic way of saying, you, we focus more on keeping people here with the amenities, the economic development options, and good schools, quality of life things. Jobs follow, and with jobs, then comes disposable income. And so it's a, it's a circle. It's really hard to kind of pin down. It's not one or the other. We do focus on the downtown and Downing because that was kind of the focus of the study. And as I said, you know, there's plenty of grow internally without having to add to the periphery of town. But as far as neighborhoods go, we talk a lot about, you know, really great properties, really great neighborhoods that are just deteriorating and falling apart. If you look around the university area, if you looked at, you know, Edmund fifteen years ago or Norman forty years ago, when people started, Stillwater frankly, people started buying up those properties. And the university population dipped, kind of the way Talakwa is now. People went in and bought ten, fifteen, twenty homes and rehabbed them. Had them ready when the student population bounced back. And you see that. You see, if you've been to Stillwater recently and you've seen some of the multi-story, you know, residential. Anything close to downtown, any of those neighborhoods are very attractive places. And you can find houses for seventy-five, eighty thousand dollars around here. You can't find that in a lot of other places. And so those need to improve as well. There's some code enforcement issues around some of these aging properties. But it's a great place to, if you want to start a family and start, you know, living. This, oh, it was a great place. You just have to, you have to buy a property and be ready to make some major improvements to the infrastructure of it.
Have you considered the concept of the opportunity zones? That we have three of them here, what the impact would be on the community?
The short answer is no, because the legislation came in midterm. Right now, there's no direct relationship between the economic value of the opportunity zones and its effect on how long the land uses in the short term. If somebody does want to invest in an opportunity zone fund, they have the means of capital, they have, you know, have a portfolio of businesses that they're working in and they want to sell something and bring something in here. It will have a shift, but it's not going to be as dramatic as it would be in markets where you could have a higher return for the same investment. So, you know, if they're going to buy a building on Brookside in Tulsa or Cherry Street in Tulsa, do it there. They probably wouldn't, that same person probably wouldn't look at the numbers here and say, oh, I'm going to take a, you know, twenty percent less return or something. And so the larger economic forces aren't necessarily pointing out the way it's intended. But yeah, it does not have a relationship with the land in Tulsa. Thank you.
I'd like one last statement that is concerning me. You know, this takes investment, this takes a developer, this takes a builder. And looking at, and you always try to look at the backside. And some of what is hurt in the business community as far as the economic development and the holdback is that the city has been more enforcement, 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 and instead of encouragement, encouragement, encouragement. And what I see with this is that your, the possibilities of it just to consider is the zoning and what you're going to put on the zoning people with making those different choices. And there's going to be a lot of different enforcements, enforcements, enforcements. But I think that the council and administration has already heard feedback, especially when they sit down with builders, that it was enforcement, enforcement, enforcement. And I'm trying to figure out how this works into it, because I thought this was going to have a clear path. So just a comment there of concern.
Any other comments? Yes?
I was just wondering how the city's going to compensate small business owners when they take our parking for improvements? Such as my business, which has eight parking spaces out front, and you're going to take six of them? Or...
Your Brian Stone it's?
Yes.
Okay. On the Muskogee plan, we have gone back in and revisited that and having that redesigned so that it won't take quite as much space. I think we had a meeting some months back and we were talking about the recognition that we might need to take a couple of spaces, but not necessarily all of the parking that you have there. And so that's one of the things that the engineer is working on in his final design for South Muskogee. Is to not take all of the parking that was originally designed to come out of there.
But taking it all, is that, am I going to be compensated? Like, given spaces for McDonald's? Because I use every single one of the spaces every single morning.
Right now, those parking spaces are in city right away, so no, there wouldn't be compensation for that. And that is unfortunate, but that sort of gets back to what you were talking about earlier about people building parking into that city right of way. And that is a misfortune, but that's happened.
Totally outside the scope of this process, but I would suggest, and I have no idea what the engineers are looking at, but if you guys can look at some temporary signage or something like signage you can put out during the day. In my another life, I'm also a coffee shop owner in Oklahoma City. We have two shops, and we have the same problem is we have people who come and go live in these apartments downtown Oklahoma City. We basically got tacit permission from the city to put out the billboard signs. And just to say, here's our parking, so go down a couple of feet this way or that. I haven't seen the plans to know, but it's, there's some things that the city can do to give you some space for signage and give you some stuff out in the public right of way, banners and things like that that could be removed. You have explored that, just to make sure people know or reminded where it is. I haven't seen the plans in there.
I would just like to know, what is our plan? What is the next step with this? We've been at it for how long? And we've had lots of other forums, we've had lots of comments. I represent TZ. We have invested a lot in this, a hundred thousand dollars. They would like to see us move forward. I, you know, the thing I look at is the safety, the health of our community. And this is what this is all about. If we have a safe and healthy community, we're going to have a vibrant community. We're going to have a, a community that has people coming to it and wanting to be here. So my question is, what's next?
Well, the intent is that it would come through the council for possible adoption.
This is kind of a follow-up to that question. So if the council approves it, do they have to prove that it is? Or can they make changes to it after it's approved?
Yeah, you can continue to make changes. Sometimes it's better, because it's written in a chapter-by-chapter format. It's a lot easier to say, page one, item, action one, policy two, or change the language to say this. And you can make that as an amendment. So you don't have to go through and go through the whole process again. Yeah, you can make incremental changes along the way. And sometimes the economy will change. And you may not, once your trails are accomplished, years from now, you may not need all these trails policies and all that kind of focus on it. So yeah, you can do it by amendment.
So maybe the council approving it or district, I guess, would at least get that ball kind of on that.
Correct.
So Mark, what's the difference between, you know, and I'll just throw this out there. What's the difference between adopting, you know, adopting this plan where we're, you know, recognizing that we're kind of holding our feet to the fire to, you know, to go by this roadmap as opposed to, you know, just having, having the plan as a reference guide, you know, as a kind of a resource that we can, you know, we can access as opposed to ever adopting it, therefore not necessarily holding our feet to the fire, but realizing the difference between, you know, the direction that we had planned to go and where we're going, and then this is, you know, I realize it's a map, right? So what's the, I mean, what are the pros and cons to adopting it versus it just sitting on the shelf?
State law requires that cities have a comprehensive plan and a zoning plan, and zoning map, zoning plan. Comprehensive plan can be as short as twenty, thirty pages, and the zoning map can literally be markers on a map on the wall. Many communities have that. It should be adopted by ordinance so that the city is in compliance with state law. Additionally to that, if there is ever a lawsuit filed, you have covered that you followed your comprehensive plan through your decision making. That's the purpose of the comprehensive plan, is so it's not arbitrary and capricious. You know, having a policy for one person and a different policy for someone else.
It emphasizes that we have a lot of people who have invested now literally years in creating this plan.
Yeah, I was one of them.
And we expended two hundred and eighty thousand dollars on it, so it would be good to adopt it.
Yes, sir.
So with the many variations of plans that there are, do you think this comprehensive plan was a wise investment for Talakwa?
Talakwa's a complex animal. Yeah, really, really. You know, I've worked on, and I'll just, just my personal experience working with a town like Hinton, Oklahoma, you know, really a great town. And I would say this, I have actually said this in front of them. They just have some big economic challenges. The agricultural center and the oil and gas center is not where it was fifteen years ago. They are positioned between Reno and Weatherford. They have a couple of casinos, and they have a prison. They have some, they have some good assets there. Yet the prison goes away, their economic engine kind of goes away. That plan was specific to them, but it also, they have I-40 running right through town. Talakwa's different, and it's a much more complex animal because of the demographics, because of all this sort of stuff. That being said is, I, obviously, yes. I mean, I've been involved in this process since the RFP was issued and I came for the interview. This is a good roadmap. There's a lot of information in here. And I wish we had the ability to really go through it in depth. It's only when you get proposals that are contrary to this that you will be like, oh, I'm glad we have a policy written down for it. It has to be exhaustive. It has to be specific. If you don't have a policy and someone comes in and does something, wants to tear down a great old building, and they propose paving it with parking, this basically says, we don't want to do that. It doesn't prohibit it, but planning commission, zoning, and city council can look at that and say, actually, our policy is, we're going to support downtown with new businesses and pedestrian traffic and those sort of things. So it does, it does limit economic potential, but it also redirects it in other ways. So on the whole, yes, as a coordinated document, we've got a lot of political challenges historically that needed some sort of coordinating element to it, so.
You said limit, it limits economic potential?
Yeah, redirects it, absolutely. I mean, we don't advocate for new commercial on the bypass. That is by definition limiting commercial, yeah, absolutely. But it's redirecting it to places where you're right now.
Okay, so if we have nothing else, we'll go ahead and call it an evening. Again, very much appreciate you being here and participating tonight. We have to move forward with this. Mark, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.